Good evening, I'd like to call to order the business meeting for the Tacoma School District Board of Directors Thursday, January 23rd, 2020. Would you all please rise for the flag salute?
President's to the flag of the United States and America and to the Republic of Portage stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
General Counsel, would you please call the roll?
President Hines.
Here.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Bombright.
Here.
And Director Keating.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Lois Bernstein.
Good evening Superintendent Santornal, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and the rest of the Board of Directors. My name is Amanda Scott-Thomas and I am the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and it's my pleasure to come to you tonight to talk about January's Gold Star Award recipient. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, we have Lois Bernstein. Lois serves as the Chief Community Executive for MultiCare Health System, and she's a member of the Tacoma Healthcare Careers Collaborative Advisory Board. Lois was instrumental in starting the first health careers program for high school students in Tacoma, known as the Healthcare Careers Academy, HCA. HCA is a unique collaboration of Tacoma Public Schools, healthcare industry, higher education, and local nonprofits that prepare students for a wide range of careers in the healthcare industry. Lois was instrumental in implementing the first school-based health clinic in Tacoma Public Schools. The MultiCare Health Clinic at Oakland High School opened spring of 2019 and is staffed by MultiCare physicians and nurse practitioners. The clinic provides services to Oakland students, children who attend the onsite daycare, students in foster care, and Tacoma Public School students who qualify for McKinney Vento. It's my pleasure, and the Community Partnership Office wants to recommend we award Lois Bernstein the January Community Partner Gold Star Award. Can we welcome John Page to the stage, who's going to have a few words before we invite up Lois?
Yeah, good evening. John Page, Director for Career and Technical Education. So in our department, we also award a gold attitude pin, and it's for distinguished leadership. And so we don't mail, you have to be president to be awarded, and you have to be recognized in front of your friends and family. And when I think about distinguished leadership, I think, you gotta tell us about that, or write a book. How do you bring the superintendent, the president of UWT, the president of TCC, the president of Bates, the CEO of MultiCare, CEO of Franciscan, CEO of the Goodwill Olympic Region? You know, how do you bring all those people together in one room and bring that collaboration, that deep discussion? That's more than distinguished to me. So congratulations with your award tonight.
Well, thank you so much. I am so honored to receive this. MultiCare is a long tradition of partnering in the community, but it's really just been in the past few years that we've had such a close relationship with Tacoma Public Schools, and that's really because of Superintendent Santornal, her cabinet, and all of you Board members. So thank you for this. We look forward to working with you in the future to really provide the kinds of services that the students in the Tacoma School District need and deserve. So thanks.
And Lois, would you please come up so we can personally thank you? Lois is too humble to talk about it, but in addition to the items that were mentioned, she was integral in the health clinic that opened up at Oakland High School. That was a project that was talked about for years. At the 11th hour, looked like maybe it wasn't going to happen, and she really helped knit everything together and make that come to fruition. So Lois, thank you for all of your leadership. We greatly appreciate it. Item number six, Superintendent's Report. Six point one, PTA Reflections Awards. Is there anybody out there for PTA Reflections Awards? Is there anybody out there that's not here for PTA Reflections Awards? Superintendent?
It's a pleasure to have the PTA here. We just started this last year, and it's a great idea to come and have our young people recognized for their accomplishments. So Ms. Stewart, thank you very much for coming and organizing this. We appreciate it, and we look forward to meeting these young people.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Janet Stewart. I'm speaking on behalf of Tacoma Council PTA Board of Directors. I also have Michael McSweeney and Brienne Doofit here from Tacoma Council. We're proud community partners with Tacoma Public Schools, and we support Tacoma's Whole Child Month by offering a program which encourages artistic creativity. The PTA Reflections Arts Appreciation Program is an opportunity to allow students to create in six different artistic categories, and they are visual arts, photography, literature, dance, music, and film. Students with special needs may participate under the special artist category. Each art entry must reflect this year's theme, which is "Look Within." For those who'd like to plan ahead next year, the theme will be "I Matter Because." Thank you Superintendent Santornal, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and the school board for allowing us to recognize these students. This year, seven different Tacoma PTAs participated, and 29 entries are advancing to the PTA state-level competition, and those are the students that we have for you tonight. So I'm going to call the students' name and have you guys in, where do you want them to stand? Right here? And we'll line up for a photo. We're not going to do the handshakes this year. And I would also like the local PTA Reflections Chairs to join us for the photo, because without them, this wouldn't be possible. We have from Jefferson Elementary, Allison Kalanick; Point Defiance Elementary, Kim Call; Crescent Heights, Kimberly Seiverson; Browns Point Elementary, Misty Tucker; Wainwright, Lori Kim; Meeker Middle, Karen Judisch; and Truman Middle School, Lisa Metcalf. Starting with Truman Middle School, John Paul Lund for Visual Arts. Charlotte Southworth. Might have you hold your applause till we're all done. Charlotte Southworth, Visual Arts. Holly Trent, Visual Arts. Miss not here today is Santa Porn Seringa Sap with Dance, and Rachel Nguyen from Soda via Truman is not here today for Photography. Meeker Middle School, Catherine Anderson, Visual Arts. Namely Bemmett, Visual Arts. Julia Gordon, Photography. Wainwright, Abigail Sheer, Visual Arts. Elizabeth Allen, Visual Arts. Zion Thomas Holman, Visual Arts. From Jefferson, Gabriel Saltz for Dance. Eleanor Atherton, Literature. Wyatt Green, Film. Lila Kalanick, Literature. Ava Azari, Photography. Point Defiance, Parker Lanier, Photography. Josiah Fields, Photography. Isabel Wenzel, Film. Hank Stewart, Literature. Devon Shada, Literature. Browns Point, Theodore McNeil for Music. Carly Nettiger, Literature. Maya Shakarin, She Won Twice, Visual Arts and Literature. Carter Young, Photography. Hansel Jaden Lee, Visual Arts. Ryan Sim, Visual Arts, and Rachel Sim, Visual Arts. So families, you can feel welcome to come closer to get a good photo, and I'd also like the Reflections Chairs, if you're not too busy taking a picture,
For all of our award winners, the prize is you get two pieces of cake. One in there, one out.
unless you'd like to stay for the meeting. You may do that, too.
of minutes to exit, to get your two pieces of cake per Dr. Garcia, and then we'll move on with the agenda. Kevin, we did save a piece of cake for you.
Laura, you want to come on up? Laura's gonna, this is Whole Child Month, and she's going to show, recognize our recognition winners. Thank you, Laura.
Absolutely. Good evening. It's a night of celebrations. It is my honor tonight. I'm absolutely thrilled to have the Second Annual Whole Child School Awards. We are awarding schools for their outstanding efforts in our Whole Child pillars of social-emotional learning, restorative justice, PBIS, trauma-informed practices, advanced tiers, mental and physical wellness, and continuous improvement. We have nine sites receiving awards this evening, and I will share a quick blurb about each site. However, that does not in any way encompass all of the great work that they are doing at that school, nor does it talk about all the great work happening throughout our district. Just a small snippet. So, without further ado, I have, I'd like to introduce first Mary Metter, who is from the University of Washington Tacoma and is a fabulous Whole Child coach. She will be graciously handing out the trophies this evening. All right, in alphabetical order, away we go. Downing Downing says Whole Child work is a team approach to help our students, staff, and families feel safe, healthy, and engaged while being challenged academically and supported in schools. Students can receive Eagle Awards and earn a spot in the Principal 200 Club, and this is super cool. They can even earn a chance to be celebrated by running with the Eagles, where the Eagle mascot trots throughout the hall with the students while the staff and teachers cheer them on. Climate survey shows that Downing, that students, staff, and parents appreciate the great work being done in the building. Lister works collaboratively with staff, families, community partners to cultivate a school that's deeply rooted in social-emotional learning for students and adults. In fact, Lister invites families into their learning space as partners on the SEL journey that we're all on, and they have students that lead SEL lessons and activities for their families. Lister also dedicates time for teachers to have supportive, restorative conversations to maintain relationships. And is that working? Yep. They've decreased exclusionary discipline over the past three years by 79%, missed days by 73%, and have significant gains in ELA and math. All right, Lowell Elementary School. The teachers at Lowell greet students at the classroom door to warmly welcome them every day. They work with students who are upset or worried by letting them meet the principal to eat lunch. They also have reset desks in the classroom for students that can cool down if they're upset or angry, and they have a lunch bunch that joins a counselor to discuss topics and process through them together. All this relationship building has resulted in decreased suspensions every year that they've implemented the Whole Child. All right, give it up for Geiger Montessori. At Geiger, children are helped to grow into themselves. Students learn peaceful conflict resolution, and they all learn to serve as allies for others. Ooh, love that. Over the past five years with the Whole Child, Geiger has developed matrices for teaching expectations. They've implemented interventions to help struggling students, and they've embraced restorative practices to develop and build that feeling of community. Principal O'Brien stated, "We pull together, and children win." Gia Gironey Middle School. The positive and hard-working Whole Child team at Gia Gironey says the key to their success is finding ways to celebrate and encourage students towards making good choices. They also have a five-star point award that is in a really innovative new online system. Gia Gironey focuses on restorative practices, including restore at the door to help build relationships between teachers and students, and students and students. And one piece of data that shows that's working among many is that more students are getting to class on time than before. Manitow Park Elementary School. Of their many successes, one to point out is their Advanced Tier Team that supports students by assigning four to each whole Advanced Tier Team member for a check-in, checkout program. The team members meet with those students in the morning, again at lunch, and after school, to make sure that they get a high score on their PALE print card for being safe, respectful, and responsible. Manitow Park also uses restorative practices of circles throughout their building, school-wide, to build relationships, and they're taking data to the next level, as Assistant Principal Lauren Taylor has created really cool apps for live data right in the palm of your hand. Mann Elementary School. At Mann, they use a systematic approach, including high-yield instructional strategies, social-emotional curriculum, student support systems, and monthly professional development. Students and teachers set goals, and they celebrate when they meet or exceed those goals. Is it working? Yep. Mann has significantly reduced exclusionary discipline since last year, but more notably, they want you to know that they have noticing such as calm hallways, clean hallways with no candy wrappers on the ground. They have no graffiti in the restroom. Their cafeteria's been transformed into a happy place, and new staff members have expressed how grateful they are to work at Mann. Mason Middle School. Mason has focused on developing and defining and teaching clear expectations. Those are rewarded with Mustang merits for being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. If a student is struggling, they are set up as a teacher's assistant with a supportive staff member. That staff member serves as their mentor and builds a positive relationship. Mason's work in increasing caring and decreasing punitive consequences means that they've improved their overall climate and culture over the last five years. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to welcome Skyline Elementary School. Skyline has implemented a solid Whole Child framework of social-emotional learning, PBIS, and they've emphasized equity, culturally responsive teaching, and restorative practices. That framework includes a commitment to practices such as zones of regulation, mindfulness, morning circles, I'm sorry, community circles, and morning meetings. A very unique data highlight, last year, they had a goal of 90% of their third and fifth, third through fifth graders able to recognize triggers that influence behaviors and cause intense emotions. They hit 84% by February of last year. So, can we just, I know you've been such a gracious crowd, and a lot of applause. Can we give the whole crew one last hand, please? President Hines, members of the board, may we have permission to come up to the dais and take a big photo?
Yes, please come up so that we can personally thank you.
Thank you.
Do the same thing as we just did with the kids in the photo?
Yep.
You're welcome to.
Shake, shake, shake.
Sunday night.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Look, you get to carry the award.
Love it.
Last is a five.
Yes, yes.
Good job.
Start making the wine.
I should cheer them up.
You're on the restoration.
I got to be around. I'm going to come this way.
Let's go this way.
All right, can we spread out and get some smiles, and if you're a little short, come on up.
They're going to get your picture.
They're going to take, I know, you speak to the front.
Thanks, everybody.
We got the trophy.
But I should give them one second. We got, the next one's a staff presentation.
Okay.
Chris?
Chris.
People like cake, too.
Sure.
I'm more of a pie person, so I'm going to advocate for pie next time we need to sell it.
I agree. Cherry.
Cherry pie. Mary wants cherry pie. Let's get on it.
It's got to be cake.
Sounds good.
Have you had a pie cake?
We have a good cake versus pie.
I'm on the pie tray.
I think I have. My dad grew up there, so we go.
What I may expect, scratch dough, so.
It was like right outside of crust.
Sure.
But.
You know, I couldn't help but notice that a lot of these schools that were recognized this evening for Whole Child were here at the last business meeting to be recognized for academic achievement. So that correlation is strong. I know through the Wallace Foundation Grant, we're working to prove that out, but I think anecdotally, we see that it's starting to pay benefits, and some of those improvements are incredible. It's amazing work by our teachers and our principals going on their building by building throughout Tacoma. It's fun to get to recognize them.
We'll move on with our agenda item six point three, investing in Tacoma. Community inclusion update. Mr. Williams?
Our team would like to provide the public and board an update with our community inclusion efforts. Our team has done a tremendous job of creating awareness and opportunities for local businesses under the 2013 Capitol Bon. These efforts have been led by our Strategic Planning and Program Manager, long title, excuse me, Alicia Lavre, and our partners as well. In addition to that, our Executive Director of Planning and Construction, Morris Aldrich, they have a short presentation for the board and public.
and what we're doing to invest in the community and create career paths for kids, and really investing roundabout in the kids itself. For those of you who weren't here in 2016, a little background, the Tacoma School Board of Directors, many of you here tonight signed a for academic achievement, so that correlation is strong. I know through the Wallace Foundation Grant, we're working to prove that out, but I think anecdotally, we see that it's starting to pay benefits, and some of those improvements are incredible. It's amazing work by our teachers and our principals going on their building by building throughout Tacoma. It's fun to get to recognize them. We'll move on with our agenda item 6.3, investing in Tacoma, Community Inclusion Update. Mr. Williams?
Our team would like to provide the public and board an update with our community inclusion efforts. Our team has done a tremendous job of creating awareness and opportunities for local businesses under the 2013 Capitol bond. These efforts have been led by our Strategic Planning and Program Manager, long title, excuse me, Alicia Lavre, and our partners as well. In addition to that, our Executive Director of Planning and Construction, Morris Aldrich. They have a short presentation for the board and public.
Good evening, and we are happy to hear to talk about the TPS Community Inclusion Commitment and what we're doing to invest in the community and create career paths for kids and really investing roundabout in the kids itself. For those of you who weren't here in 2016, a little background, the Tacoma School Board, Board of Directors, many of you here tonight signed a Community Inclusion Commitment that focuses the district's new and maintenance-related construction projects on three overarching priorities. And let's see if I can work this out. There we go. Those three priorities include investing in our local businesses, our Tacoma and Pierce County businesses, expanding opportunities for disadvantaged businesses, and creating career paths and opportunities for our young adults. And this couldn't be done without our partners also. This task, this Community Inclusion Commitment was also signed on by the Pierce County Building and Trades Council, AFL-CIO, the Black Collective, the Tacoma Ministerial Alliance, the City of Tacoma, the A. Philip Randolph Institute, and the NAACP 253 Tacoma Branch. As we go about this work, there are many goals that we are committed to, and that is focusing on local businesses, focusing on minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, small businesses, and of course, the 15% apprenticeship utilization is how we really measure our career paths for young adults, and a lot of the extra stuff that our contractors are doing as well with offering internships and things like that. I am happy to share our many awesome results and really showing true investment in the community that, as we reported in our annual report that just was completed. One of those being 69% local investment out of the $51 million, or, we invested more than $51 million in Pierce County during the last business year, which is 69%. So there's more than that overall, but that is just in Pierce County. And if you look at the graph, you can't really see the details, but you can see the gold lines, the bars going up over time and very sustainably. We've been over our 30% goal now for three, four years, and that's an ongoing improvement, and we've definitely seen it stabilize. Of that, also, 11.9% of our small works projects are invested in women or minority businesses, and it used to be a lot smaller. Again, if you look at the bars there, it used to be a couple of percent, and now we're up at almost 12%, and we expect to continue to grow that. And it's definitely stabilized in recent years. Our large projects, we're happy to have some representation here tonight, but on, feel free to jump in here, but on Bernie, Grant, and Bose, you'll see that we're meeting all of our goals except with the women-owned businesses, but one of the great things I'm excited about here is it used to be with our minority-owned businesses, we were in that, more of what we're seeing with the women-owned businesses right now. And instead, we're now above our 10% goal and more than double that on both Grant and Bose, and it's been amazing to see that progress as well as our local businesses, that investment coming back into the community on all of those projects.
Just to speak to a little bit, just for us, how we got there with these results. When we start, when we started working with and selecting our contractors, it's having those conversations, once, once they've been selected, looking at how they're going to reinvest into both Tacoma and Pierce County. As we've looked at projects like Bose, which is our first design-build project and the first design-build K-12 project in the state of Washington, with that one, it's actually part of our selection process, where they actually have to show us who are, who are some of their local partners, and how they then plan to help grow small businesses and get them involved in the process as we move forward. And it is as important in our selection process as any other category there. In fact, from a point standpoint, it's about, what's 15% of that. So they have to come to us with a plan, we then take that plan and make it part of their contract because, obviously, we can't make them do it, but with, if they're telling us they're gonna do it, then we're going to hold them to that plan.
Another one of our important initiatives is making sure we're investing in those kids. And so right now, we are meeting all of our apprenticeship goals, but also a lot of our contractors are going above and beyond and creating internships for those kids, both on the design and architecture side and on the contracting side. Lots of internships, lots of going out and talking to classes as well, and really exposing the kids to different careers and showing them that you could, whether you're a woman, a minority, a man, all these things that you can do these jobs too, and really engaging the classrooms and the school communities, going to family events and keeping them updated, and really showing the different players involved in a project as well. So in addition to all the, kind of the great numerical success we had, it is the, what are we doing differently, which Morris started to touch on. We changed our approach to capital projects. We've been implementing accountability tools to make sure that we are paying people the way, the right wages, that people, small businesses especially, are getting prompt payment. And there were increasing collaboration. One of the great things, partnerships we've had is working with the City of Tacoma, actually the Minority Business and Development Agency, a federal program there. They've been working hand-on-hand to help small businesses get certified so that they can get on with other businesses, and we can count them, all of that. But a lot of businesses struggled, especially small businesses, women, minorities, to get certified, and so this kind of hand-holding them through the approach is getting them on additional jobs and exposing them to new business as well.
Yeah, we touched, you know, touched on what we're doing with our major capital projects with, with design-build, but as we look at, at our bond passing in February, on February 11th, what we're looking there, when we start looking at our small cap projects, is making sure that we're working folks within Pierce County. Because those projects are things, are tender improvements, where you're putting up a wall when you look at our secure vestibules. We're doing some, some minor electrical work in various buildings, looking at our HVAC systems. All of those things are jobs, really, that should stay in Pierce County. We've got over $200 million invested in those areas. Some of them may be technically wise, where we may not be able to, but the majority of those dollars should remain at home as we start to move forward. And by working with the city, what they have done for us is really go through and interview a number of folks, and send those that, that they know are suited to work on our projects to us. So we've had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to interview four or five women-owned businesses within, within the last few months, that we know that will maybe either do some of our smaller projects or work on our major capital projects. And once we have selected folks on our, on our major projects, we're actually introducing them to the, to those companies as well, so they will know that these folks are in Tacoma, are in Pierce County, and can work on those jobs.
So a lot of this is really about providing opportunities and an environment for small businesses to grow, which, which includes connecting them to projects, to mentoring opportunities, and ensuring they're being paid correctly and promptly, promptly, and have the tools and resources they need to succeed. It's about investing in the community that's invested in us. It's about building business and workforce opportunities locally, which builds, makes for a better community, improving lives for our families, and really improving life for our students. With that, I would like to invite up a great example of some of what we have been working on as far as the, where our new networking opportunities have taken us, were collaboration with our partner contractors. So if I can invite up Rachel Pease with Corsmo Construction, and Lucinda Creasy of Roof Masters, who've been working on Grant and Bose. And I'll just start out by saying, these two met at our first networking event that we did as part of kind of this new effort. It was the first time, and they met there, and I will let them kind of talk about the rest and what they've done.
Alicia, just wanted to add on real quickly. One of the things that our team has worked extremely hard on is eliminating barriers for small businesses and local businesses. If you're a small business, it's very difficult to get in the same room or have that opportunity to meet with a large contractor. You try to attempt them, you're a small business, most likely you won't get a call back. So you're excluded for getting on some of their projects. So this team has worked extremely hard on creating networking events where you have small businesses in a room with large contractors, so you're eliminating those barriers. So they've done a tremendous job with that, and this is how, obviously, these two partner up.
So I started by getting my minority business status. I was a year and a half into business, and I found out about this process, and it was a six-month process. They came to my home, looked through everything to make sure that I was the sole owner of my company, and I knew what I was doing, which is something that I am very appreciative of, because I don't want somebody just taking my name and saying, "Yeah, she does it," because I do do this start to finish. And so with that, I was bombarded with emails the moment I got that certification, because there is a need for minority businesses to be doing these jobs, and I really appreciate that Tacoma Public Schools has taken the time to give the opportunities to us. So I went to that first networking night, I met Rachel there, and from there, I did not know what I was doing, other than handing out my business card, because this was a brand-new field for me. Roofing is my passion through and through, but I've never been in the commercial world until now, and so I'll let Rachel explain a little bit more about that.
Thank you for having us here tonight. First, I just want to say thank you to TPS, because I was starting the diversity program at Corsmo Construction at the same time that you guys were ruling out these projects, and Morris and Chris and Alicia got up there and just, I mean, all I can say is it's a movement that we're doing here in Tacoma, and so I built our program at Corsmo with their leadership. And they aren't owners that just say, "Here you go, meet the goals." They helped me, I was in the office, they helped me reach these goals. So I just want to say thank you to the amazing owners. So with that being said, I met, I met.
You just called me Creasy.
Creasy, no, sorry. At the event, and she was a woman-owned roofing company, which you don't see, and I brought her into the office, had her meet our team, and we interviewed her, and there was just something about her will and sheer drive, and I believed in her, and we took a chance on her. And I believe that's a responsibility for a contractor. We need to get back to our community, we need to invest into our, our businesses. You know, the people of this community deserve the financial gains for what we're doing in this community. So, anyway, we brought her in, long story short, we helped with the bidding process, and she won the bid. And she's now almost finished with Bose?
Done.
Yeah, done with Bose. So this is just a, this is one example of what we're doing. We're helping, you know, these small businesses, and we're taking a chance, and we're not just having them come bid on our project, we want them to be successful. It's for the long run, it's for the sustainability of the companies, so they in turn can give back also to the community. So we're just really excited for the opportunity, and we're thankful to be in this community and just doing great things with you guys.
And I'd just like to add that, from the very beginning, I said, "I need help, I know how to bid a residential roof, but I need to know what the caveats are, because there's gonna be things that come up that I'm not aware of yet, because I haven't been there." And everybody sat down with me and said, "These are the things you need to be aware of, this is what you need to bid in, bid." And then, when it came to, "Now you need certified payroll," and all these extra things that I didn't know what to do, Corsmo was there to mentor me and tell me, "This is what you need to do." And anytime I picked up my phone and asked a question, everybody had an answer with open arms. So I was able to complete Bose. I will be the roofer on Hunt Middle School this year, and I'm doing a job with Corsmo at the Tacoma Housing Authority as well. So it's been a great success story, so I appreciate all of it.
Thank you for sharing your story. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Vice President Cobb?
I just want to say thank you all for all the work that you've done. I think that you don't get to meet and exceed goals like this unless the team fully believes in it. I can see the pictures with Chris and Morris in them, like you guys actually at the events, actually making the connections too, so I really appreciate on our team's end that you've really believed in and bought into this vision from the start and put your full effort behind it, and just, I'm excited to see the impact that these opportunities for small businesses have just more broadly on the community, because these adults are connected to these kids. So I'm just really excited for the potential to continue, like you said, this movement, and to see where it goes. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
I just have one.
Dr. Keating?
I would just say that I'm really grateful, as a previously small business owner and married to a small business, local businesses, I think it's, I think it really shows the value of Tacoma Public Schools, and I'm just really grateful for that, so thank you for making that investment.
I'd like to, could we put slide five back up on the screen? Anybody with the clicker?
I'm sorry, I can't tell which one is five. You tell me when.
It's the one that, that one, yes. So I want to draw attention to, you know, it was noted that the board formally in '16 adopted goals, but if you go back, if you look at that chart back in 2013, 2014, that's the last time that the school district ran a bond issue. And the, the board at the time was, that's when we really first started talking about making an investment, that that $500 million bond that passed overwhelmingly in 2013 was a $500 million investment into the community. And you can see then, over the years, how we've continued to prioritize that, and I'm excited, because I think we've, we have a proof of concept now, we know how to do it. I was out of Bose yesterday, Morris was kind enough, it turned into a driving tour, because it was a Pineapple Express coming through, although those Corsmo Construction folks are out there in a downpour. But you, just to see it put into action, that, you know, we talk about innovation, and we've said that innovation is our brand, and it's how we do business, and I think people oftentimes think about it in terms of Science and Math Institute, and project-based learning, and those sorts of things that are happening in the classroom. But it's an extension into all of the work that we do, and it's really amazing to see Chris and Morris and the team, and what they have done with this direction to try to be more inclusive. And I think that we've got an amazing opportunity to continue this with the bond issue that we'll be voting on here in a few days. And I know the board has continued to give the superintendent the direction that we want to see as many of those dollars invested in locally-owned businesses and minority and women-owned businesses, and I see that as another $535 million investment, not in Tacoma Public Schools, but into the community. So I'm excited to see as we continue this, we know what we're doing. I think we're only gonna see that bar graph go up and up and up and up, because we've got the right people in place now, that's, that have created the right relationships, this public-private partnership, and I'm really excited. I think this is something that we have the ability to take to conferences around the country and talk about. How are you doing it? Because we are really maximizing those tax dollars to the benefit, we're building educationally-focused buildings and getting money into those local companies at the same time, which I think is pretty awesome. One last question I have, when I hear about, when I see the data on women and minority-owned businesses, and I hear we're working with the City of Tacoma, is there an opportunity for the district to work with the State Office of Women and Minority-Owned Business?
We do communicate with them pretty regularly about trying to see what we can do better, and we look forward to growing that relationship as well, absolutely. I know that, as it is, we've talked to them about some of what we've been able to do with state-funded projects is kind of unheard of throughout the state, so kind of trying to see how we can share those best practices with other organizations, and also where other organizations have been seeing growth. We've been able to talk to them, they've used some similar strategies, so definitely in touch with the State Office and looking forward to working with them more.
Dr. Garcia?
I think we're still one of the only, or one of the few K-12 systems that does this kind of goal-setting and work, and so we're learning from our other governmental agencies and some of their best practices and evidence, and then taking that and looking at what does that mean in our current constructs of legal requirements, because each one of these agencies has different legal requirements to what we can and can't do. And then, not only is this team reaching out to the state, but a big shout-out, once again, to those local trades folks, advocates that are sitting at the table with us, that are pointing us in the directions, helping us think, and also encouraging that outreach and building trust with our community partners, to say, you know, "They're serious," they being us, "We're doing this, but you need to come," and also, and so it's, I think we heard it, it's a partnership at all the different levels, it's a lot of work, it's the right work, and I think Director Cobb said it best, is, you know, if we have a healthy community and healthy adults, we're gonna have a better chance at healthy kids.
Great, thank you. Vice President Cobb?
I just wanted to say, Dr. Garcia kind of mentioned this too. Alicia, thank you for mentioning all the partners who came to the table originally to help us put this thing together. And we talk a lot about partnerships, but I think there's usually partnership and push, and I think in this case, I remember lots of push.
And positive push, though, so I just want to give another shout-out to all those organizations, like the NAACP, Black Collective, all those organizations who are at the table pushing us to get to this, because it is new in the K-12 space, but I think we're all saying that in the end, it was the right thing to do, and it's leading us in a good direction, so just appreciate them, too.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Superintendent, do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, we do not. Move on with the agenda, item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions or comments? Well, I, I am, because he's too humble to talk about it, I'm gonna note that Dr. Garcia has been invited to a international gathering in India, the theme of learning to live for universal well-being. The Round Glass and International Trust have carefully selected 100 of the world's most progressive thinkers and doers in the field of learning, and from key disciplines that center on well-being, to gather, reflect, and work together in creating practical, best-practice content that will be shared with edu-
And positive push though, so I just want to give another shout out to all those organizations like the NAACP, Black Collective, all those organizations who were at the table pushing us to get to this because it is new in the K-12 space, but I think we're all saying that in the end, it was the right thing to do and it's leading us in a good direction. So just appreciate them too.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. Superintendent, do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, we do not. Move on with the agenda, item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions or comments? Well, I, I am, because he's too humble to talk about it, I'm going to note that Dr. Garcia has been invited to a international gathering in India. The theme of learning to live for universal wellbeing. The Round Glass and International Trust have carefully selected 100 of the world's most progressive thinkers and doers in the field of learning and from key disciplines that center on wellbeing to gather, reflect and work together in creating practical best practice content that will be shared with educators worldwide. And our very own Dr. Garcia is one of those 100 globally. So congratulations, Josh, and thank you. And I would also note that it's 100% grant funded. So we're, we get the benefit of you getting to go and share and learn and that's a tremendous honor. So we're proud of you and that's, that's pretty cool. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number nine, policy matters, 9.1, second reading of policy 4260, Community Relations, Use of School Facilities. Mr. Williams.
The district's chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors approve the second reading to policy 4260.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number 10, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org about finance. Ms. Medina, is there a financial report this evening?
There's not a financial report this evening, but we are going to be changing the title of this to just a financial report after we've heard the board's expectation or desire to have more frequent and regular interactions with you around our finances. It's our expectation that we'll be bringing things once or twice a month, just depending on what we have available and, and what that looks like. So we'll change, I see that I have a language change that I need to add to the verbiage there, but just to bring some awareness to that.
Thank you. We appreciate you being responsive to the, the board's interest in those more frequent updates, especially as we continue to navigate ourselves out of some pretty tough budget times. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. There are no items under that category this evening. Item number 12, business matters, no items in that category either. Agenda item number 13, other business, 13.1, adoption of resolution number 2072 and acceptance of contract between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Specialized Landscaping Incorporated. Mr. Williams.
The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors adopt resolution number 2072 for the acceptance of the project completion approval, approve the acceptance of contract for Specialized Landscaping, Inc. for the false high school softball field.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move.
Is there a second? Mr. Williams, could you give us just a brief overview of what this entails?
Moving forward, when we have multimillion dollar projects, we want to come to the board when those projects are closed out. I know there were some comments in our previous board meeting about how, why are so many projects previously outstanding? We just want to make this a consistent process moving forward that when we close out a project, the public and board are aware.
All right, thank you. And again, superintendent, we board appreciates you being responsive to those items of interest. Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number 14, one of the best reports to the board of the year, 14.1, Strategic Benchmark Annual Report, Academic Excellence Graduation.
Good evening. Am I on? Can you hear me? I can't hear myself, so.
Good evening, President Heinz, Vice President Cobb, members of the board. This evening, Assistant Superintendent Pace and I will present to you the annual academic excellence report on, excuse me, I skipped the page, the priority benchmark measuring the percentage of students graduating on time. The other dropout rates continuing are in the appendix of this report. This first slide represents the percentage of students who graduated on time. We continue to exceed the 2020 graduation benchmark with, of 85% with 89.8% of our students graduating in four years. The district on-time graduation rate has increased 7.2% over five years. All student groups, with the exception of the multi-Pacific Islander and special education student groups, graduated at or above the district benchmark goal of 85%. The Native American student group has increased by 21.2% over a five-year period, which is significant growth, and 19.9% increase between 2018 and 2019. The student group multi is the only student group whose graduation rate was at its highest in 2015. However, it's important to note that the number of students who have identified as multi or two or more races has almost doubled since 2015. While we see a slight decline in the ELL student group, there has been an increase of 31.7% increase from 2015 to 2019. The special education student group increased slightly from 2018 to 2019 with a 1.3% increase, but has increased a total of 11.4% over the five-year period. I covered all of the key findings for you as we went through each slide, so now we will share with you some of our next steps.
Thank you. As our graduation rate continues to climb, we will be continuing a number of practices that have been proven to be successful. We will continue our work around the alignment of standards, instructional practices and professional development. We will also continue to provide rigorous as well as equitable access to challenging and relevant curriculum that provides the opportunity for students to accelerate. We will continue with our CAP process, which provides a laser-like focus on those students who need additional supports in addition to core instruction. We will continue our early warning indicator system that flags areas of concern regarding student achievement at the earliest possible time, allowing for development of specific action plans. We will continue offering students credit recapture opportunities during the summer and extended times throughout the year. And our title and lab are continuing to work closely with buildings, building leadership to provide targeted intervention for middle school students, especially in math this year. The special education team is developing a progress monitoring tool to ensure that special ed students are meeting grade level standards in English Language Arts and Math. We're open for questions at this point.
Great, thank you. Are there questions or comments? Vice President Cobb?
I always have questions. I just want to thank you for the report first. And I think just for, maybe for the public, but for us too, like when we look at the subgroup data, I think it's, I appreciate you pointing out the changes in the number of students who identify as two or more races between 2015 and 2019. I think that's an important piece of context. Similarly, I think having maybe the insizes represented on, on the chart or as an appendix to the chart would be nice because I just remember last year us reflecting on the Pacific Islander outcome and how high it was, but that the insizes are matter in terms of how many kids are actually represented and the difference between those rates. So I just want us to keep that in mind as, and the public too, as we look at the changes over time, that end size matters. And with the two or more races too, I think my mind might be, you lose things over time. But like, it wasn't until like 2011 or '10 that that was an option to indicate two or more races. So the students who entered as middle schoolers around that time were probably, like just the rate at which students are consistently identified as two or more races is probably stabilized now, or it's getting to be where it will be. So how we look at that group over time is probably going to be different than how we were looking at it in prior years. So there's just context around the ends that I think is important to keep at the forefront.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just to clarify, because I think that's a good point to capture. So we have the chart that is representative of the current population. So you'd be interested in seeing that data, the delta from year to year, the change year over year?
I think just generally having some reference to insizes, the number of kids in the groups. I don't think it, I don't think, I think it's a lot to clutter up the chart, but.
Okay. Because we do have the, there's, you know, there's 4,115 students that identify as multi-race?
Yeah, I see the district, I just mean as the number of graduates. Like in a particular year, the number of Pacific Islander graduates might be quite large and the next year, that's a whole different group of kids, it might be a third the size, so.
And Tony, if I remember correctly, students get to select what race they are every year?
Absolutely, yeah.
Sometimes they change from multi, you know, multi-ethnic one year and then they're not the next year. So there's, there is some variation in that statistic, that data.
Generally, I think keeping tabs on the trend is important, but for those smaller groups, I think knowing the differences. And the only other, I think that was my only comment, the other one, I can keep it in my head.
Thank you.
Director Leon?
So, well done, congratulations. And really just the improvements in overall numbers, as you said, across the board, you know, so those two groups have small numbers of students in them and they did go down. But overall, really, the trend is, is positive. So excellent for the whole, the whole system is doing well for these kids. I've got kind of two questions. One would be, what does the early warning system look like? Can you just give examples of kind of what different schools or places or teachers or principals, what are they looking at, some of those things? Is it, is it, is it working well enough? Are you looking to improve that?
I'm going to ask Dr. Doug Hostetter to come up. I asked him to come, especially if you had this question, because he's the expert. He's our executive director of secondary education.
Because that's really just a key place to figure out who is at risk or not doing well, to intervene early, right? And get them to succeed.
Absolutely. And so early, I don't know how much you know, but early warning indicator system, they talk about the ABCs, attendance, behavior and course performance. So it's those three metrics that the schools are looking at with incoming ninth graders. So it begins actually when they're in eighth grade, they look at attendance patterns, behavior patterns, course, grades or course performance patterns. And they set up teams, you know, so like at, a lot of our high schools or all of our high schools have early warning indicator systems, but the teams could be a counselor, assistant principal, a teacher leader, and they check and connect with those students that they've identified with ABC issues and then come up with interventions. It could be parents brought in and partnered with, it could be as simple as checking with, how's your, you know, are you organized? Is your backpack set up? Do you have homework? Have you done the homework? What kind of assistance do you need? So it's, it's really intentional focus of the kids that have, that the schools have identified as having ABC issues coming into high school.
Is it on a continuous basis? So if, if there's problems, the warning system goes off so that they can meet with them any time of the year? Or is it quarterly, every, twice a year?
They check, I would say every other week, the students have identified to look for a decline in any one of those issues, ABCs, so.
Excellent. My second question was around the IB program and how we're doing with increasing the numbers of participants and the whole IB certificate, the diploma program and people taking the classes.
So that would be under our academic rigor benchmark. We could bring that back data specifically back to you in another update. The latest numbers including, we're, it's January, so the May-ish time is the season for AP and IB exams. So we'll also be able to tell you how many folks actually took the exams and then we'll get the results over the course of the summer.
Good, thanks.
Just Director Bamber.
On that same note, I've just been exposed over the past couple of days to the CTE program and all the valuable incentives and opportunities that that program has provided. And I'm wondering how that's going to be, how that has affected the graduation rate and whether we are retaining kids and getting them excited and, and moving in a different pathway and if that's being tracked in some way.
Yeah, so what we do is, I think Director Leon said it's really a comprehensive systems approach to graduation. So you have the leadership of Dr. Hostetter and his, his team of high school principals and their teams, curriculum instruction, the data and assessment team that gives reports so that they can look at which kids are struggling every two weeks or in those areas. The number of students that are earning industrial certifications, we're one of the few school districts that we're aware of that measures that and has systems for that. You folks have played a critical role in policy 2000 that allows flexible opportunities for students to earn credit, the role in supporting edge annuity through the title lap program that provides those. So it's all woven together. And the thing that I take the, a lot of pride watching and observing our team do is, in spite of the early warning indicators, they don't quit. They never give up on a child. And when you look at our five-year graduation rates, our six-year graduation rates and our seven-year graduation rates are all over 90%. And so I would imagine our, based off of this last year, 89.8, we can anticipate that that will be another year of there. And so I think it's pretty safe to say that CTE plays a role, but there is no one simple answer that is in there.
I guess my question was more because isn't that a fairly new program? The CTE, has it been?
Career and technical education has been around for years.
But I mean, the way we, we're doing it now with the more, and maybe I just, I hadn't just heard about it before.
So the board in 2012 had its first round of, in its benchmarks of posting a goal to measure industrial certifications. And what we found is, is we couldn't really look at a model that we could, that was comprehensive. So there are a lot of new programs, to your point, that are just starting. Wildfire suppression certification. The general counsel teases me that says, we'll arrive when we can have kids jump out of helicopters in wildfires in a CTE environment. We haven't gotten there yet. Tide flat certification, partnerships with the city of Tacoma. So you're correct, there are numerous programs that are live and starting. You heard about the young man in the Ajax program. Director Page and the team and high schools and the staff are doing a marvelous job of trying to meet that and, and making sure it leads to a industrial certification, not just a group of classes to expose interest, to truly demonstrate to the kids that they are career ready. Do you guys have any industrial certifications?
No.
You've still got a semester.
Director Keating?
I'm reflecting on a conversation that Marie, you and I had, when I'm looking at the student groups, male, female, and we were talking about non-binary students and the support systems that are in place and that are continuing to be in place. So I'm wondering how, in the future, how that demographic of student is going to be reflected moving forward? Or if, in the future, as a consideration, if that could be reflected.
So you folks have adopted the filters and so that would be up to you as you're going through the, and what I mean by that, the strategic plan goals and the filters there. You mentioned the groups tonight and the complexity of the end size. Sometimes the end size of a group may be small, too small to reflect, even if it's a total. Or there's an unintentional consequence of saying, for example, we know the number of the end size, but we could very easily figure out which students are in the example, did not graduate because the end size is so small that we unintentionally disclose that. And so we do have to be cautious about that and that has some limitations. And there's ways to reflect that and not applicable across the whole group. But you folks would ultimately make that decision of, is that how you want to look at the data for the strategic plan?
Thank you.
Vice President Cobb?
Just a comment, based really, related to Director Keating's question. I remember maybe last year, maybe a year and a half ago, the state was still, like gender X became an option for enrollment forms and other purposes statewide. But I remember that OSPI was in the process of trying to work through some state and federal issues around including that because at the federal level, if you don't do male or female, then it's counted as missing. So it would be just great, maybe in a Friday report at some point, just to inform our, our decisions or thoughts about the filters, to know where things are at with regard to implementation of that as an option.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. What is the state average for graduation rate?
The state average? I don't have that number.
I'm in the process of, what did they say? Google it?
Okay. All right, let's come back to that. And I raise it because when you look at slide three, and slide three even is, I think, deceiving because 2015, 82.6, which I think is around what the current state average is, it's easy to lose sight of the fact. is, it's easy to lose sight of the fact that in 2010, the graduation rate was 55%. And people say to me, why do you keep talking about graduation rate? I say, well, a couple of reasons. One, the Foundation for Tacoma Schools, as part of Collective Impact, went out and engaged the community and the community's top goal was graduation rate. And concurrent to that, the school district was finishing a strategic plan and implementing benchmarks. So that alignment between what the foundation was hearing from the community translating into the actions that the district takes, and that really is a culmination of a lot of things. I hear people say, well, it's an inflated graduation rate. Well, it's an OSPI formula. You're either graduated, continuing or dropping out. We don't, we just submit the numbers. The numbers, the numbers. Students have unique identifiers. We know who's who. I think we did get better at those students that transfer from Tacoma Public Schools into a different school district and who's accountable for their completion. I think also, and I think this is where Director Bombrich was going earlier today, we had an opportunity to spend a couple of hours with Governor Inslee at Stadium. And two hours of governor's time is amazing. And I think what we saw, and it was student-led, student-focused, is that students now are pursuing at an earlier stage in their school life, things of interest to them. Like they see greater relevance. I think, you know, we celebrated the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative award winners. So we're not just, here's your diploma, good luck. We're starting earlier with students to say, what are you passionate about? What do you want to pursue? What are you interested in? And then we have amazing teachers in the classroom that are helping lead those students down the path. And sometimes students say, oh my God, I would, I would never want to do this as a career. Well, better to figure that out as a 10th or 11th grader than after you've spent $80,000 on a college education. I think we've got kids that are, students that are leaving school now with a better idea of what they want to do in year 13. And we have really dignified those pathways. You want to be, you want to work with your hands. I sat next to a young man today who is a journeyman as a senior in high school, is making $28,000 a year as a senior in high school and is going to get another certification in sheet metal because he likes to work with his hands. And he's going to walk out the door with a diploma in one hand and those certification and journeyman card in the other. And he's going to go make a lot of money doing things he loves to do. And so that's what I think we're getting out of this. And I think those verified letters of acceptance to the next institution. So we want to encourage students to dream and we want evidence that those dreams have a chance of coming to reality. So you want to go to Harvard? Great. Let's, we're going to get you qualified and then we want to see that letter of acceptance. You want to go into the military? Great. When do you report for boot camp? Right? We're honoring and dignifying all of these paths. And I think that that's just one number. The kids today that we saw, the students today that were proficient in Microsoft Office suites that have industry-level certification?
Experts.
They're experts!
Microsoft experts.
Yes, and I try to always correct myself because I'm getting older and I say kids, they're students, but they're kids and they're experts. And they're leaving with, with this yearning to go out and make a difference in the world. So yeah, we're graduating more kids, which I think is great, but we're graduating more kids that are prepared for life. They're prepared to go out and pursue things they're interested in. And that, to me, is what all of the work is about. And I hope that both of you have had a similar experience in talking with you. You seem pretty focused and passionate about what you're going to do in year 13. Is there anything that either of you would like to add? I mean, you've been, in your school years, you've seen this kind of meteoric rise in the graduation rates. Would you be willing to share some of your personal experience?
Oh yeah, definitely. I have to say, so I'm very passionate about environmental science and going in, all the science teachers in my hall know me because, because they know I'm passionate about science. And just from day one freshman year, I have one specific teacher who I go to all the time. I'm saying, this is what I want to do. Can you help me get there? She talks me through, here's the degree you want to get, here's what you want to do. What, do you want to be doing this side of environmental science or this side? And getting me intrigued in really what I want to be doing in the future and having those conversations with not just one teacher, but multiple teachers just throughout my high school experience has been great and really has not only gotten me my diploma, but gotten me somewhere I want to be going in life, so.
I'm not really sure what I want to do in my future, but I just wanted to say, I'm really thankful for like people like you guys, or not people, but like, you know, that care about students and, yeah.
The state is reporting their graduation rates for the class of 2019 at 80.9 average.
So we are, we have well exceeded it. And I think now the challenge for the board is to figure out, number one, sustainment. Because I can tell you, having been here for this ride, going from 55% to almost 90% is exhausting. And when I talk to principals about things that they put in at the building level, the things that are most effective are exhausting. So sustainability is going to be a real issue. You know, this expectation, oh, you just look at the results. We increase the graduation rate every year. Well, we have. And I think the new expectation in Tacoma, it's why we got into the joke around eating cake, is maybe we don't need to celebrate every year, except Kevin reminded us that cake is always a good option. But in Tacoma, students graduated at 90% clip right now. And I think the five of us are going to be in a great position as we update the strategic plan and the benchmarks to say, okay, the graduation rate is there, let's drill down. What else do we want to see students leave? We know they're leaving as critical thinkers, they're compassionate, they're empathetic, they're motivated, they're focused on climate, they want to get engaged. So what do we want to drill down to and make certain that we can measure evidence-based and data-driven? And I think what I hear from this board is we're going to do a lot more listening to students. I think we've hit the mark in a lot of areas. I think we've missed some opportunities and I hear a desire on the part of the five of us to get out and truly authentically listen to students. So we just continue to produce students that leave with a bright future and just excited about what they get to do next. Mary, did you have another comment?
And I'd like to ask that list that you were saying. I think we want students to leave confident because we're wanting people to go into their careers and into higher education and we want them to feel that they're able to walk into Harvard and walk into a job they want to go to and feel like, I have the education to be here, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
I always, I always think that when we present this incredible news, that it's important that we recognize, as Mary did, the teachers in our schools that are truly taking each student, every student, and thinking about, what does it take to get them to cross the finish line? And I also think it's very important that we recognize our principals and our just, our building administrators. Because if you're in the schools and you're listening to those folks, they're talking about every student, each student, this student needs this, each, and making certain that we start those conversations early to help those students know what it takes, what do they need to do still, yet, to finish that, across that finish line. So I think it's important that we recognize the many people in our schools that are working really hard.
And I'll just go on to all those folks real quickly because, you know, I think it's, as Assistant Superintendent Verhar mentioned, there's, you never know when you're going to make a connection with a child that's going to make a difference. And so you have parent educators and you have kitchen staff and our custodial team and bus drivers and they all roll up their sleeves and do that. And one's not more than another and it takes all of us and takes all of us, the superintendent reminds us, rowing in the same direction. And then my final comment is tremendous pride on all of the behalf of the organization. The community partners have also rolled up their sleeves to do that. Shameless plug that you can go onto our website and start to provide you folks feedback about our strategic plan. That was the first one under, last week. This will not be our only approach, but you'll see four to five different surveys because we have a lot of benchmarks to give folks that opportunity. So please go out there and start to give that feedback and then you'll know in the accordion process, we'll gather that and then we'll go out in some other engagement activities.
Yeah, thank you. The, as Governor Inslee was leaving Stadium today, I was standing with Ian, Principal Akada, and, and the governor said, this, what I've seen in the last two years, or the last two hours, rather, is the education system that I've always dreamed about. It's pretty high praise for someone who is a presidential candidate and who has been all over the country to say that what's going on in Tacoma, and it's not any one thing and it's not just the Tacoma School District. It truly is a community-wide effort and it's pretty cool to get to be a part of it. Any additional questions or comments before we move on? Thank you for your report. Item number 15, board comments and reports. I'm going to start with the students this evening. Do you have anything you'd like to share?
No reports from me, but I just wanted to say, good luck to everyone on the finals and as we move on to the next semester, that everyone just has a good first semester.
I have two. One is that Wilson Basketball is doing really, really well right now. I think we're ranked third, first, second, third in the state?
Five, I think.
Yeah.
Which is pretty good.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, but they're ranked super high in state right now, which is really impressive. And not just that, but the character they've built throughout the season, you can see it, they're definitely leaders in the school and they bring that leadership on the court, off the court. And that's been great to see. And also with finals week, there's definitely a talk about mental health, stress, anxiety, not sleeping. And the fact that you guys are talking about Whole Child right now is very appropriate. And also, good luck on finals and next semester, so.
And did I overhear that there's something exciting happening for you tomorrow?
Oh yeah, I'm signing with my, with Whitworth University volleyball program tomorrow.
Director Keating?
I was just going to reflect, Monday, I attended the city's MLK celebration event and represented the school board. And there was, it's an event that I actually, I don't see it as a day off. I usually drag my kid to go to that event. So it's one I've been going to for a number of years and I usually leave very inspired. And there was something that, the keynote speaker, and I hope I pronounce her name correctly, Dr. Marcia Tate Arunga, the dean of Evergreen, the Tacoma campus, I believe that's correct. She had talked about, she mentioned that she'd lived in Kenya for over 10 years and she was reflecting on the, she said she was there with a group of educators from here, from the states, and that when they were in Kenya, there was an elder that was talking to her and she said, you know, like, as, as a, as she, an African-American woman, that they have been known to be the stolen ones in terms of American slavery. And what she shared was that this elder in Kenya had said to her, but yes, but you were missed and we looked for you. And it was really a powerful moment to consider the other impact, the other narrative that we don't talk about when we talk about Black History Month, which is coming up, and we talk about the systematic impacts of slavery over generations that we're still seeing. So this idea that there was a, the impact that happened in Africa, that, and an impact that happened here simultaneously, was an extraordinary perspective. And even for Dr. Arunga, she was really moved and said, she'd never, she'd never been told that she was missed and that she was looked for. And there are stories that they tell in, you know, across Africa about the stolen ones and that how long and how many months people went out to sea to look for them and never gave them back. And I felt that that was just a really, as we look forward to Black History Month, which shouldn't just be a month, but as we look forward to that, I think it was just a really poignant takeaway that I had, a really moving takeaway and something that I've continued to ponder and will continue to reflect on.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Director Bombrich?
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. Well, the last week has also been one of continued exploration for me and trying to learn more and more about what we're doing and had an opportunity to meet with Laura from Whole Child and Amanda from Partnerships. And, you know, those are two things really close to my heart because they really reflect what happens in early learning, which was my background. And it just seemed like such a natural place to be with these people that are talking this way. And, and I've been, then I was out witnessing today with the governor and at the superintendent's breakfast this morning with the, with parents and, and principals, that actually it's, it's way more widespread than, than, you know, I'd ever dreamed possible. And I'm just seeing the beginnings of all of this positive Whole Child, Whole educator approach and how it's integrated with the partnerships. And it's everything you were just talking about, Scott, about why is it that our graduation rate is just a reflection of the commitment from the teachers, from the, from all of the school personnel? As Josh said, it's a, it's a, it takes a village. And it's, it's so uplifting. And I think we are, and I hear all, you know, Tacoma has, has it together, they're doing all these things, but it's hard work. And that's why we're asking about the data, because the data helps drive. And sometimes we see that we thought this was the, the goal and we went, oh, it really was just a piece of it and here's this other piece that now we recognize. And I'm, it's, it's just exciting and I find it so stimulating and I'm excited because starting in about a week, I'm going to be starting to go out to schools and feeling really good about, like I did today at Stadium, seeing it applied with the kids. And that's the magical part. And it's so, to me, so powerful to talk to all those kids we talked to today. And I was thinking about, oh God, the kid this morning who was the robotic man. That's right, man, who was an English, I mean, Vietnamese-only speaking child until in sixth grade. And in two years, he was fluent in English and became the first to, you know, take this challenge and make this robot do something no one else has ever made it do before. And I, it's, it's mind-blowing what this school district is doing for every single child out there. And I think that's a commitment that I see in the eyes of Carla, your entire staff that I've met. And so congratulations to you and to Josh and the rest of the team for pulling together and keeping everyone's momentum up. And thanks to the public for, you know, believing that change could happen. And I hope everybody, you know, takes that belief in us to the, to the ballot box because I think that's going to be huge for the schools that haven't changed yet, that haven't been rebuilt. I also have heard and talked to students about the change they feel, and Mary's talked about this, and also about the change you feel when you are in a school that's revitalized. It changes the attitude. So those are just some reflections on what I've heard for a month and then now applying it when I see it in, in real life, it's just magical, so.
Thank you.
Director Leon?
Yeah, so it really was a feather in our cap to be able to have the governor here and a lot of, it goes, as everyone said, all the staff at the, at the schools here with your leadership, superintendent, to be able to bond with these kids and bring them forward. I know my kids have gained a lot from theater, instructors, music choir, coaches. They all, they all play a role, not just the teachers and the parent educators. So the, the governor was really impressed and he said so many times. So I think it was, to be able to bring him here, Carla's got some special hotline I was talking to her about that she's got with the governor. So nice work being able to bring him down here multiple times, apparently, to see the great work we're doing and show off how well our students are doing. I think the other ones we didn't mention, there was also some catering students that made some amazing food that everyone ate and some healthcare students that showed off some of their, some of their classroom work and some of their aspirations in the future. So the governor did speak about mental health also. He comes from a history of knowing what that, what mental, what counselors do in schools. He's a, he's a son of a counselor. I don't know if his father or mother were counselors, but he spoke about that and the need to improve our mental health and safety, which is a priority we're taking on as a board and the cabinet also. So I think that if we do more to support the mental health of our kids, we're going to make that graduation rate and all the other things that go along with that continue to go up. And yes, it's still work and we do have to sustain it, but it, it'll, it'll even go higher than, than we are now. So I think there are just many good things to come in the future with that. And just a report back on, so I visited Grant recently at Hunt, so learned a lot about the arts program there, met with the principal, got a great tour. So they, they have a UPS professor that comes and spends times there, spend time there. They've got an autism program called, program called The Nest. And just the way they scaffold academic learning around the arts, you know, just an amazing way to make it fun for the kids to learn and show their skills in all different artistic ways was very impressive. I know that we're trying to do this around the district and other places, but they're, they're kind of one of our lead elementary schools in that. So nice work.
Thank you. Vice President Cobb?
I don't mean to be the downer of the group, because, you know, I'm team Tacoma all the way. But I just do, in the midst of all the celebration today and all the positive discussion that we're having about things that are good and happening in the district, I do, I still want to acknowledge, and it's not far from any of our minds, I know, but I just want to say out loud that the narrative that we're sharing right now may not be the experience and the narrative that certain families and students
and the narrative that certain families and students have had in our district. So I think in the midst of celebrating the successes, it's important to, it just acknowledge that the focus we have often is about students who aren't being successful in our district, whether it's because of the environment, because of something that they bring to the space, because of an interaction they had, whatever the case may be. There are students who aren't successful, there are some of our educators who need to be supported better, but I think that's the work every single day. So I, I, in the midst of celebrating, I just want folks to know that we're not so far into, like, the stars of our success, that we don't focus every day on getting better and better. A focus on continuous improvement too is real, and really acknowledging where the gaps are and where the areas of improvement are. And we do spend probably 90% of the time focused on that, but it is nice to have these moments where we stop and look at where we've come from and the potential that we still have in front of us. But I just wanted to say that.
Reality check.
Thank you. Little housekeeping with respect to committee reports. So we've talked about committee assignments and tying those back to reports and our own professional development. And I've had a chance, Director Cobb and I met last week and went over the historic committee assignments. And there are a number of committees that have had the same board member on that committee for years and years and years. So we're going to endeavor to try and have it be more rotational so that all of us can have those experiences that we're interested in having. We did put together committee assignments, and I, I shared those with you, but publicly, Director Keating will be the board representative to the PTA Council and to the School Traffic Safety Committee. Director Baumright will be on the Joint Municipal Action Committee, which is the consortium of Tacoma School District, City Council, County Council, Parks Board, and Port. Director Leon will be on, oh, JMAC and Audit and Finance for Director Baumright. Director Leon will be on the CTE Advisory Board. And Safe Streets, pending approval, that is one of two committee assignments where the organization makes the selection, but you're highly recommended. I'm pretty confident in your confirmation, but I also want to be sensitive that it is an outside organization. Vice President Cobb is on JMAC and was chosen to be the vice chair of JMAC, so congratulations. And then she also will serve on the Head Start Policy Council. I will also be on the Audit and Finance Committee, and then the Foundation for Tacoma Schools elected me to be on that board. So I attended my first FFTS board meeting last week, and during my orientation, I committed to be a conduit between the foundation board and the school district that I felt over the years I wasn't, even though the superintendent is on the, is on the foundation board, but the superintendent has a different role and responsibility. And what I committed to the president of the foundation board was to be the conduit back to the school board so that we can share what's going on here, and I can share with you what's coming back from the foundation. And one of the first opportunities for partnership is the foundation is getting ready. I alluded to the 2020 goal of community graduation. They now are getting ready to go through their visioning process for 2030, and they're going to set that community goal for 2030. And also, the city of Tacoma is going to be working on a strategic plan for education. So I suggested that, given we anticipate having our strategic plan and benchmarks updated this spring, we would have the, the data and the primary responsibility for educating the kids, the students, understanding that it is in partnership, and we need the foundation and the city to be at the table. So they are going to look to us to provide some guidance where we think the priorities are and where we want to focus, but also then the foundation being able to maybe recognize some of our blind spots, some areas that they hear where we can get better or we can do more, and they'll feed that to us so we can think about that as we set the strategic plan and the benchmarks. And then those documents will be aligned and complimentary. And from the city's perspective, we were talking about what are relevant education goals, and one of the things we noted was early education. I know when I first got on the board, there, you know, we had a handful, and Director Baumright knows because she lived in this world for a while, that the school district has made steady progress in increasing the number of preschool programs that we have in the district. And I don't think by any means we believe we're the only ones that can provide quality preschool. So, so what I asked of the city was what are the conditions that we hear that these private preschool providers would need to come into our community and start a business and be aligned with the outcomes that we want students to be receiving through that preschool program so they're prepared when they come in through kindergarten and they're ready to go the Tacoma way? So I'll continue to keep you updated as that process unfolds. I've asked Tanya to begin when we create the agenda, that under announcements of future board meetings, we'll note when those committee meetings, our respective committee assignments, when those meetings are happening. And then on the agenda after, at the next business meeting after that meeting has occurred, so if we were in process, we would have noted that last week was the Foundation for Tacoma Schools board meeting, and then you would see as an agenda item, my report, my board report back to you to give you the information that was gleaned at that board meeting. We still, we were, yes, I see alignment. And then we can start to think about our own professional development. And I think certainly in Director Leon, you're, in your second year, so I still consider you kind of in that learning process as well. And I think that there's a necessity for a lot of professional development. And so please begin to think about what would be of benefit to you, and particularly as you get into these new committee assignments. How do you go and be qualified and prepared so we can come back and make informed policy and budget decisions together? So I think you'll start to see more alignment with our professional development, which then may be reflected in our travel requests and those other things as we go out and seek to become. We certainly have expectations of our, of, of the superintendent and the team having a, a professional development plan, but as long as I've been on the board, we've never had anything remotely close to some sort of formalized plan and expectation where we, to the community, hold ourselves to a standard to say, hey, we have to go get better collectively or individually on these issues. So I look forward to your comments as we move this process forward, because we really will be creating it from scratch. So it'll be a great opportunity for us to collectively define what that is. On, at our study session last week, I told you that I'd been working with the, with our government affairs team to put together that letter that will go to the county council for the mental health tax. We tried to create it general enough to get as many Pierce County signatories, school district, as signatories as we could. And then if the council is receptive, get into those specifics of how we would recommend the funding be used to keep us out of having to wordsmith with 15 school districts. But I do think it will be important for us to come back to that from a Tacoma perspective to offer what we think would be a wise investment of those dollars, what that process will look like going forward. I think, again, that'll be, it's yet to be determined. I did send a letter to every school board president in Pierce County, so we'll see what their collective response back is. And then I think we probably could use one of our upcoming study sessions to have a little more conversation at the appropriate time what that looks like. Does that work? Does that sound like a transparent process?
Yes.
Superintendent, do you have anything this evening?
No.
Deputy Superintendent?
I know that I speak on behalf of all the half-staffed, the kudos, but it all starts with our superintendent. And oftentimes, we don't hear some of the amazing work, but make no mistake, we get great direction and guidance and vision from there. So I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that the graduation rates are relentless pushed by our superintendent to help us all improve and never lose a single child.
Thank you. Item number 16, announcement of future board meetings Thursday, February 6. We will be back here at 6:00 PM for a committee of the whole. The focus will be on health and safety of students and staff, policy and strategy. That'll give us a chance. And we've had some time to reflect after last week's presentation, very thorough on all of the good things that are happening in the district. And then for us to come back and say as board members, what's next? Policy considerations, budget considerations, other things that's related to that mental health, suicide prevention intervention topic. Thursday, February 13th, get yourself ready for Valentine's Day by coming to our business meeting here at 6:00 PM. Thursday, February 20th, we have a study session, and I believe that that's a family policy and budget policy, but we'll clarify and make certain that we get that out ahead of time so the public knows what we'll be talking about that evening. And then Thursday, February 27th, we have a 6:00 PM business meeting, and I would invite the public, next week, January 28th, we get to officially cut the ribbon at Galt, so, or at, pardon me, at Grant. So those students will be in for that official celebration. I know we've had this off-launch, and they've been in there, and they're super excited. It's a cool building, and it'll be awesome to get to go and have the formal celebration. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.